Before we start the meeting, I would like to exercise a little mayoral privilege. And I'm gonna ask for some help in calling the meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask my granddaughters to come up here to call the meeting to order. This is Elaine Gottesman and Avery Gottesman.[28.02][28.02](Laughter.) Come around that way.
Very patriotic.
She's pushing her along. Katie, you can come up closer if you want. Shh. Can you tell everybody your name?
My name's Elaine.
Can you say it louder?
Avery.
There you go. Okay, you wanna call the meeting to order? What do you say? I call this meeting? Real loud, say "I call this meeting."
Call this meeting to order.
Okay. You hit this one, okay? Will you hit this with it? Go ahead, pound it. All right.[81.81][81.81](Applause.) Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Pastor Rojas?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you, understanding that you are the King of the universe, that you reign as a sovereign, but that you have entrusted men with the task of governing. We understand that the authority that government has is established by you, and that's why we pray to you. Lord, we also, in your word, learn that we are to pray for those who govern. We pray in that regard because we want to live peaceful lives. And, Lord, we pray that you guide this meeting. Lord, we want to pray for those who serve the public, especially those who put their lives at risk for the police and the fire department, and also those who are tasked with representing the city. Lord, we just pray that you guide us as a city to honor you, and we pray for tonight's meeting, that you give wisdom to those who are making decisions. And we pray, Lord, that there is always integrity, righteousness, and honesty. Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in a country when we say that we are a nation under God. And we just celebrated that, the liberty that we have, and we don't take it for granted. We know it's a gift from you. And, Lord, we just pray for your guidance today. We pray for the many challenges that the city has. We pray, Lord, that you help us, 'cause we recognize that we have limited resources, but you can do more than we can. But also, Lord, you have given us the responsibility to make decisions, and we pray for that tonight. In Jesus' name, we ask these things. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the...
Motion to table 9B.
Do you wanna do that now, or do you wanna do it when we get to 9B?
We could do it now.
Okay. We have a motion to table item 9B. Is there a second?
Second.
There's no discussion on tabling motion, I understand?
Correct.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
We have a special presentation from Laredo Hospitality.
Good evening, Mayor Hill and fellow commissioners. I was here to kindly request that you table item 9B per my letter that I sent earlier today. I was gonna go through a recital of that letter, but in light of tabling this matter, I think I can spare you the time of reading that here today unless you think it's appropriate.
Do you intend to make another presentation to the Liquor Commission?
Yeah, so we... I'll summarize it rather than read it. We believe that it was not handled properly at the Liquor Commission last time. We'd like to do one more... We'd like to go through it one more time and have one more shot at it and get a fair shot at it. And so, we do plan to show up to the next Liquor Commission to make a presentation to that effect, and I don't know when that meeting is. Is that this...
There isn't one scheduled.
There's not one scheduled. There's not one scheduled at all, and how do we request one to be scheduled? Or how does that go about if one is not scheduled?
You would contact the local liquor commissioner and ask if they could schedule a meeting, 'cause I don't think they have any matters of business to address at this time. You went through the renewal process and the license applications, so there's nothing pending. But you can make a request in writing to the local liquor commissioner to see if they will accommodate that request.
Right. And just so I'm clear, then would this item be tabled until we're able to attend another Liquor Control Commission meeting and make another presentation?
We didn't put that condition on there right now. I'm recommending to the city that we table this matter so that we could look into a couple of things, but it's not conditioned upon you appearing before the Liquor Commission again.
Right. It's just tabled.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I guess, again, I'm not... I'll spare you the expense of reading through this and, you know, just say, again, it's our intent to hopefully become a productive member of the Zion Business Community. I think we've put in a lot of time and effort over the last nine months, time, effort, energy, resources, dollars, and we've been very patient, and we would just like to see a fair process and be treated fairly, you know, through the process. And so, our expectation is, hopefully, we can, Mr. Mayor, present at the next Liquor Commission meeting to be scheduled. We will request that meeting post, you know, in the next several days, and, you know, hopefully, again, we can be treated fairly at the next Liquor Control Commission meeting, and we'd love to be a part of the Zion Business Community, so I wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, the citizens' comments. The citizens' comments, we have Mr. Tracy Johnson from Zion.
Good evening, ladies, mayor, council members. I had a guest in town from Washington, DC this weekend, and we enjoy the fireworks and all festivities of Zion. And my 25 years in Washington always made how comments how quiet and good old hometown Zion is. And last night after returning from the fireworks, we heard a discharge firearms, small and larger caliber. And so, I called the Zion Police Department, thanked the Police Department for your timely response, and within five minutes, they responded. I drove through the neighborhood and flashed the lights and checked, you know, through the alleys and the different homes, and everything was very quiet. But I'd just like to take this moment, 'cause I know the police don't always get a good thank you, but thank you again for your timely response, and if you ever need something, just come on by, get some water, whatever you need, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Item number seven is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on June 21st, 2016 at 7:00 PM. An approval for non-release of close session minutes of a meeting held on June 21st, 2016 at 8:20 PM. Bills, vouchers 123878 through 123977 drawn on First Mary Bank, total $525,204.05.
Prove that we approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion?
So move.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is considered passing resolution as follows, 8A, relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, IMRF, per Mayor Hill. You have information in front of you, and I think if you turn to the fourth page, the last page of your IMRF little packet there, you see that there was a resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And on the original document, it says that elected officials must perform duties of 1,000 hours or more per year, and that was for the mayor and city commissioners. And Clerk Burkemper brought this to my attention, that there's another document that's here that talks about... Well, anyway. First of all, none of our commissioners are under IMRF at the present time, and neither is the present mayor. And the requirements from IMRF is that a person has to put in 1,000 hours. And when it talks about 1,000 hours, they're talking about, and I'll quote this, "If requested by IMRF, the unit of government should be prepared to produce the documentation verifying that the hours required to perform the duties of the office meet or exceed the IMRF hourly standard," which is 1,000 hours. "This documentation would include, but not be limited to, office hours, number of meetings held annually, preparation time for meetings, conferences, and other corroboration of the time required to perform the duties of the office. Time spent on call or otherwise informally available to constituents does not count towards IMRF hourly standards. Additionally, downtime spent traveling to meetings does not count towards IMRF hourly standards either." And it talks about, "For an elected position, this service includes attendance at official board and committee meetings, preparation for meetings, meetings and telephone calls with constituents and other officers and employees. Hours actually spent working are counted, but hours spent on call are not considered when determining the expected hourly requirements of elected position, nor is time spent traveling." They talk about, "This documentation could include office hours, number and duration of meetings held annually, conference preparation times. Time spent on activity which are related to running for elected office cannot be counted in the hours which are considered for IMRF eligibility. The provisions of the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act prohibit compensation for time spent on political activities." And basically, what we keep... We come to the conclusion, and the commissioners have all come to the conclusion prior to this, that they don't put in 1,000 hours. So, the reason that this is before us today is that the mayor does put in 1,000 hours, and the mayor would be eligible for IMRF if we pass this resolution. I am not under IMRF. I have no intention of going under IMRF. In fact, I can't go under IMRF, 'cause I'm already collecting my pension under IMRF. So, this would not apply to this mayor, but I wanted to be sure that we pass the resolution so that the next mayor that comes into office, if they work 20... Over 20 hours a week, they would be eligible for participation in IMRF, and that's all this does. It spells it out, that the mayor in the community of Zion would be eligible. Again, that will not include anybody up here.
Didn't the first document, I mean, list the mayor and city commissioners?
Not the... The front page document should not.
No, I mean, the one we passed.
The back one. That's the one that Diane brought to my attention, and I said, "Well, we don't wanna do that." We have not passed this, have we? We didn't pass this.
You did, the one that's attached to that.
Oh, we did?
165, yes. That was passed, mayor and city commissioners.
Okay. Well, we're deleting that and going with just the mayor. When did we do that?
April of 15, I believe. Didn't it say that in the memorandum? On the 5th of April.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, that was a mistake, and we're correcting the mistake, that we just make it for the mayor's position, but it won't apply right now. I mean, it applies right now, but I'm not doing IMRF. I just want everybody to understand that, so...
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass this resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Consider... Item number nine is considered passing ordinances as follows, 9A, amending the City of Zion Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-183, to provide for elected officials' compensation, IMRF retirement benefits, per Mayor Hill. This is an ordinance that codifies the resolution that we just passed. There is a actual part of the ordinance that reads, "The mayor shall be eligible for Illinois Municipal Retirement benefits. The position of mayor is IMRF qualifying based on the office requiring work of 20 hours per week in 50 weeks of the year. If requested by IMRF, the mayor should be prepared to produce documentation verifying that the hours required to perform the duties of the office meet or exceed the 1,000 IMRF hourly standard." So, there will have to be documentation from any mayor that would decide to go on IMRF that they are working 1,000 hours a week.
I approve that we adopt ordinance amending the City of Zion Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2, 183, to provide elected officials' compensation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number nine, C, to lease certain property located in the City of Zion, a portion of the unimproved Caledonia Avenue right-of-way, per Director Ionsen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Romero Aranda, the owner of the property located 1,00729 Street, is requesting to lease a portion of the unimproved Caledonia Avenue right-of-way for additional parking and dumpster enclosure. He's requesting to lease 1,953 square feet, based on past right-of-way leases, staff is recommending annual cost of $300, attaches a copy of lease for year-to-year.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? And a second. Is there discussion?
This is about what we... I mean, we lease other right-of-ways and other property for... About this price, is that right?
Yes. We just recently did one a few months ago for a business in town.
Yeah.
I've got, I guess, a couple of comments that I'd like to make on this. I'm gonna vote against this. I happen to think that the boulevards, and this is on one of the boulevards, the Caledonia Boulevards, are part of Zion's history. The city was laid out in the shape of a Union Jack with its original design, which is a wonderful, wonderful design. And I... While I was at the Park District, the Park District decided to lease and give up some of the property on the Caledonia Boulevard for Aldi's, and they also agreed to give up part of the property on the boulevard, which is where Walgreens is right now. My position at the Park District at the time is that we should absolutely not give that property up, but they were the elected officials, and they chose to sell that property for those developments. I happen to think that... I know that the Park District and numerous occasions, on probably 40 or 50 occasions, have had requests to use the boulevards, and they have steadfastly refused, and the city is the way it is today, and it's still laid out, except for a couple of exceptions that I just named, pretty much the way it was over 110 years ago. So, I will vote against it. I would urge our commissioners to vote against it. I think that if this gentleman wants to do something there, he needs to come back to the zoning board for a variance, but I just think that our history has been here... It's been this way for so long. To put a parking lot and a fence on it, I just think would be inappropriate, and I don't like the idea of... I think it's a slippery slope. So, that's my opinion.
So, the business that was approved a few months ago, where was that located?
Right on 23rd and Sheridan Road, the strip mall there.
23rd and Sheridan Road?
For when they moved Lucky Jackson over there.
South side of the building?
Yeah.
Those little parking spots.
That's not the boulevard.
That was an east, wasn't it?
No, it's sort of a city right-of-way, but it's not a boulevard.
Right. I'm talking about boulevards. I have no problem working with city right-of-ways, but I do have a problem working with city right-of-ways on boulevards. I just think that there... The history of this town is very rich, and I hate to give into it, but...
I'm not drawing a correlation between what you say when you say the history of it. So, what's the danger of...
The map over there is, it shows the city's laid out like a Union Jack flag, and this is an encroachment on that. We would be leasing this landing, and that would... He would have access to that property, and I'm sure he's gonna asphalt the parking lot, and I just... I don't like what then comes next. I mean, the hospital wanted to expand on Shiloh Boulevard, years and years, probably, I think it was 1986 when I first came back. It's one of the first meetings I had, and I said, "Absolutely not." And then they wanted to expand along Emias... Or Emias Avenue from Shiloh Boulevard going north, and I said, "Absolutely not." And apartment complexes on Edina Park, and it's just... I just... The history's too cool here. It's just... And that's my objection.
Mayor Hill, I tend to agree with you, but how much of Caledonia are we talking about? Can you explain this flat that we have here?
Yeah.
I mean, it's already... Caledonia's already chopped up.
I know.
It's south of the building. The building's on 29th Street. It starts in the southwest corner, goes 36 feet south, then goes 108 feet southeast. So, basically, it's like a triangle, just completing the property that he has there now to expand the property for parking and dumpster enclosure. You see the highlighted lines on the southwest side there?
Yeah. The dark line, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. About 1,953 square feet.
So, the portion of the Caledonia is 108.5 feet by 36 feet, and it's in the shape of a triangle?
Yes.
That's the amount of the boulevard that he's asking for?
That is correct.
And that's a year-to-year lease?
That being an annual lease, yes.
What would happen with that... With the property if the lease is up?
I'm sorry to hear...
If it's an annual lease?
If we don't renew it?
Right.
It would revert back to the city. It would have to be, I guess, whatever the commissioners decided. If you had to remove the parking lot that he put in, it's still an annual lease.
Is there a cost to reverting it back or approximate?
Yes. I don't know that cost, but yeah, it would be a cost to revert it back, to get it back to existing conditions.
Paul, is there any liability on the city's part that we would... If the city would grant the lease, and then five years from now say, "We wanna end the lease, just because we wanna end the lease"?
No. It's a year-to-year lease.
And there's... We wouldn't be sued for depriving him of his livelihood or whatever?
No. We retain possession of the property. We never lose title to the property. We're just entering into a lease with this current adjacent property owner, and it is among... It's a year-to-year lease.
I'm afraid on a... Even on a year-to-year lease, and I'm fighting hard for this one, on a year-to-year lease, I would be afraid that when we're not here anymore, people are gonna forget that it was leased by the city, and I just think it's gonna be hard to get back. I think it would be hard for us to take that back, but I guess I'm done. So, is there further discussion? The motion is to approve the lease. So, if you vote yes, it's approved.
Excuse me. Is the owner of this... That's requesting this lease here?
I did not see him in the audience, no.
Did he know this was coming before the council?
Yes.
And this is just a two-flat?
No, it's four units.
It's a four unit.
It's the four unit right behind East School.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Nay.
Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
Nay.
Commissioner Dutton?
No.
Mayor Hill?
No.
Item 10 is the departmental commentaries. Anybody have anything?
One small thing. I just wanna give kudos where it deserves. Last Tuesday, I needed the services while I worked at the Zion Design Department for myself. It's not a worker's comp claim, so... Nothing of that nature.[1619.56][1619.56](Laughter.) But, you know, it turned out to be nothing very serious, but at the time, when something happens, you don't realize that. I just wanna commend Eric Troy, Italian Chief, who was the first one there. The other fire paramedics, I did not know who they were, but they're very reassuring, very professional, though there was a brief discussion, who was gonna stick me for the IV. But I just wanted to personally thank them for what they did, because when you... You're in a time like that, and you don't know, you know, what's going on, for them to reassure you before you even leave the premises, that is something that's not serious with you. To me personally, was very gratifying, and I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
I also wanna offer some kudos, and I'll take a few minutes to explain why this is coming today. I think, working with people in the private sector, as many people are... Most of the people on the city council are, and I think some of the department heads also can feel this way, and I think the general public does too, is that government operates slowly, and I think sometimes people get frustrated by that. And one of the reasons that I've been involved in government my entire life, and I tell people, government is designed to run slowly because we're spending somebody else's money. If you're a private businessman and you wanna asphalt your parking lot, you can call up your friend and say, "Hey, come over and asphalt my parking lot. It can be done the next day." We do think slowly because we have to be sure that the parking lot needs to be asphalted. We have to be sure that we're getting the best deal, and we have to be sure that it's done correctly, and so it takes a lot longer to do that. I was complaining... Is that the right word, Diane? I was complaining to Diane that I...
Venting.
I was venting, that sometimes I think that we're not getting anything done here in the city, and I was expressing some of my frustration on some of the things. And the first month after I got elected, when I ran, I talked about that I wanted to do something with housing, I wanted to do something with crime, I wanted to do something with taxes, I wanted to do something with diversity, trying to think there were a couple of other things. And I sat down with the help of Diane and Cheryl and came up with a list of priorities that I had, and I think Nate said, "Yeah, you might wanna put that one down a little lower." But we... I ranked them one through one, and then 1.5s and twos and threes, and I just wanna... I wanna go over them and share with you what we actually have accomplished, and I was feeling pretty good after she pulled this list out for me. We said that we wanted to do rental inspections. We're doing rental inspections. We wanna do new... We want to do nuisance abatement program. We're doing a nuisance abatement program. I wanted to check city hall hours of operation during the noon hour. That will be taken care of very shortly. We talked about it as the reorganization and training upgrades and uniforms and everything, and I think they looked absolutely great during nostalgia days. I think it was... That was very good. I want to have any FOIA requests received by the city clerk or police department to provide the mayor with copies of documents if they could be controversial in nature and impact the city council. We're doing that. I wanted to revisit video gaming issue. We've done that. I wanted to review the liquor ordinance and how it would review... How it would relate to video gaming, and we've done that. And it says revisit liquor sold by convenience stores. That's been deleted. I wanted a monthly department head written narrative reports to include past month's activity, upcoming events and activities. They're doing that. Investigate diversity among city staff. Myself and Commissioner Fryerson are looking into that. Review and revise the city fee schedules for all city departments. That's been accomplished. City staffing, we're looking at what are two most, we think are two most critical areas for future hires, and that is a human relations director so that somebody can... Who is an expert at personnel matters can do that. And I think we need to get an economic development director on board as soon as possible to assist with that. We talked updating policies and procedure manuals. We're doing that. And evaluate IT, our IT firm's performance. Along with those things, we went through a, what I would consider very difficult and long budget discussions on, I believe we cut $1.6 million from the budget. So, we've been working on that. We've been working on... One of the other things to talk about when I was running was taxes. And with Commissioner McDowell, we formed a taxing body group from all the representatives from all the taxing bodies that are meeting to find out ways we could keep taxes down. And one of the things that came out of that was a very serious and, at this point, active. And we're making progress on being compensated for the spent fuel rods down on the lakefront now. That's a long way from anything, but we're working on it, and we're making some progress. And what I wanted to do is, I want to thank the department heads and the... All the commissioners because everybody's been active in making these things happen. These are just some of the goals that I had, but it's primarily the department heads and the rest of the staff at city hall that have done it. And I want to let the public know what they've done and all the things we've accomplished, and I want them to know that it's truly appreciated by myself and the city council, and I thank the citizens of our community. So, I just want to say job well done because when I look at this, we have actually, we've done a lot in the last 13 months. We have a lot more to do, but I just want to say thanks and let you know that it's truly appreciated. Announcements, July 19th, 6:30 PM. It's a town board meeting. And the appropriations ordinance will have a public hearing at 7 o'clock. There's a Zion City Council meeting. And the appropriation ordinance public hearing, August 2nd, 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council meeting. And we have need for a closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2 open meetings for the discussion of pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.